It's seven oh three, I'm gonna call the meeting of the board of selectmen to order. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance, selectmen or down would you like to lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All members are here in presence, first item of business is going to be approval of the March seventeenth regular meeting minutes during your packet. Everybody's had an opportunity to review, is there a motion?
Vote to approve the regular meeting minutes of the Board of Selectmen on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
There a second? Motion's been made in the second and any corrections? Any none, all in favor, please say aye, aye, opposed abstain. Three in favor, one abstain, thank you sir. All the participation, this is one of the public's two opportunities to address members of the board of selectmen. I don't see anybody other than Ms. Hoffman online, but if she'd like to type in as a member, I'll let her invite her in a moment. Is there anybody here in the room who would like to address the board of selectmen? Ms. Hoffman?
I'm fine, Jason, no problem.
Okay, so we're on the communications, we have two. The first is a freedom of information request effectively from the warehouse point fire commission. It has been responded to, or rather the request has been acknowledged, the response is being compiled by the finance office. Who's been busy with other things lately. And once there is something responsive, if appropriate, there's one that back on the time. Secondly, there, I included a piece of testimony that I submitted to the government administration and elections committee pertaining to remote meetings, there's a bill in the general assembly that will extend those through the end of the calendar year, or rather extend the option of those to the end of the calendar year. Absent that extension, they will sunset at the end of this month. What that means is that members would currently have the option of participating electronically. So for example, you were away last week, or last meeting, had you had internet access, you could have remoted it, that will no longer be the case if this bill does not pass. In the testimony you'll see, I actually suggested that it be allowed to be extended indefinitely. Because it's the twenty-first century, we're in a space and time where we want to encourage people to participate in the process by whatever means are readily available, and this is a means that is available. So unclear if that'll pass or not, but I wanted to let you guys know that I was kind of putting a marker down on that. We have no resignations, we have no reappointments, we have no new appointments. So we'll move on to agenda item nine A, discussion of the fund balance policy. So this has been in effect for quite some time. There is no record that it ever came to the board of selectmen, this was passed by the board of finance, according to this, in April of twenty nineteen. But the board of finance is not the policymaking body for the town. They're the financial body for the town, so because this is a policy document, I wanted to bring it to the board of selectmen for ratification. I think all but Charlie have been members of the board of finance, so we're pretty well familiar with it, I'm sure, in his second term Charlie has caught up. So I, all I'm asking for is a vote to accept the policy as drafted in April of twenty nineteen.
It's only one take, you know, so you can do anything there. And this wasn't a draft?
No, that is the actual policy.
What we, what we do.
Yes. Now it's weird, some of them don't, I'm not really sure why that is, but that's how it is.
Make a motion that we approve the fund balance policy as advised on four seventeen, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, ninety, this is another longstanding issue that we're seeking to resolve. So there is a lease agreement that was included, that there was, it was included in the packet between the town and scout hall building committee, passed in April of two thousand and two. There have been some ambiguities in there, the scout hall building committee has asked be clarified after a series of meetings to address their concerns. I think the red line, that's, is it right on your top, the red line, it's in your copy, addresses what their concerns were in terms of clarity. And all it does is insert a reference to capital asset, the capital asset policy and town procedures for big. That amends section six of the existing lease agreement and while you're, you're the president of the scout hall building committee, I think that clarifies what your concerns had been when that was raised.
In the simplest way possible.
Yeah, it's like fifteen words, wonderful. Any questions or comments on this? Yeah, it's, it's an amendment to section six, which is you can see the origin, it doesn't take anything out, it just isn't addition.
You just adding one.
Yep.
We've got a lot of time on this over here, trying to give you a, 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 thank you.
Probably spent five hours coming up with fifteen words.
But prior to this, there have been other meetings, and it was getting very complicated, now it's, that's the best.
We'll make a motion that we accept the amendment via six amendments of voting, as presented.
We're second, second, made in second, any discussion?
Could this need to be now resigned?
Yep.
So that'll be, do we want to authorize you to resign it?
Yes.
Make, make a vote and make an amendment to allow first left to Jason Bowser to sign.
You made your second, I do, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you folks. Alright, we are on to I see the DOT encroachment application, so you'll remember the arts and culture commission approached us about doing some of your own work underneath one of the overpasses. DOT responded that they were about to do some work to that overpass, so that wouldn't be available. So the arts and culture commission pivoted to the other overpass in East Windsor, which is the main street one. And this is the application that allows them to move forward with their neural project. So it needs to be signed by the property owner, which is the town, I'm using for the town, so I need authorization from the board to go ahead and sign the request on behalf of yours and culture.
I'd like to authorize the first selectman to sign the application for to the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation for a encroachment application.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Get that up tomorrow. Okay, so if you all remember, way, way back before COVID started, we were all lined up to do a commemorative event for Korean War veterans and Vietnam War veterans. And that was, according to the lieutenant governor, that was the, ours was the last public event on her calendar that didn't happen, or rather the first one that got canceled. So she reached out a few weeks back and is interested in rescheduling those, and I talked to Dr. Tuchan about utilizing use of the building, and there are two dates that are that we're going to do, one for the Korean War veterans and one for the Vietnam War veterans. The reason for that is because we're looking to still kind of minimize crowd size. So the, on June sixth, at the, at East Windsor High School, not sure of the time, we're gonna do the commemoration for Korean War veterans. And then on June sixteen, we're gonna do the commemoration for Vietnam War veterans. June sixteen is a selectmen's night, so, and there's also five Thursdays in June. So what I'd like to do is to cancel our regular meeting from June sixteen and we'll do a special meeting if needed on the twenty-third. I strongly suspect that there will be a need to have a meeting on the twenty-third, because I don't think we really should go four or five weeks without meeting. But, you know, we'll see what the circumstances start. So that's what I'd like to do, so I'll entertain any questions about that, or a motion to go ahead and cancel the June sixteen.
I'll move that we cancel the June sixteenth Board of Selected Meeting. Did you want me to save a little bit to the twenty-third, necessary in my motion?
I'll just call.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a second? Made in second, any discussion? I won't be, which day, it's twenty-third.
I'm on vacation then.
Okay.
And I'm staying. And I leave the Friday after what would have been on June sixteen.
I'm rich, yep. With, with that in mind, if there is a need for a meeting, I'll try and talk on agenda as far as I can. Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Just so you guys know, the original draft of this agenda went up to the letter M. Um. Okay, so as you know, the Broadbrook Fire Department has gone through the bid process of for purchasing a new fire truck, as part of the credit agreement for that. They need a resolution by our legislative body. Basically, as is outlined in the sample here. So what we will need to do tonight, from a ministerial standpoint, is approve the resolution for the town of East Windsor and forward that to a town meeting, which we will hold on the twenty-first. And then the legislative body will do its thing now. This is just moving the paperwork for the same lease that they had already entered into and trying to present the ready. Any questions or comments? We did not do that already.
Did you see it?
No, we saw the lease, yeah. We need, we need to take the resolution.
Like a hundred pages?
Yeah, we need the resolution, and we need to send the resolution to town meeting, so it's this piece that we I'm gonna go ahead and set the one for seven thirty, because I'm gonna forget to call it down. Any comments on that?
Move we approve the resolution approving the lease purchase agreement and escrow agreement for the Broadbrook Fire Act Madison, forward it onto a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second, made in second, any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll do that two weeks from tonight. Um. Director Norton?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, how are you? Living the dream, you came to me earlier, late last week, early this week with a proposal on all great collections, I'm gonna ask you to introduce it for yours.
Okay. Like, like, I had the, I got the packet online, so I believe you all got that. So we, we get a lot of calls at Public Works, people wanting to know where the transfer station is, where the dump is, where whatever is. You know, can we come pick up this, you know, couch refrigerator? Number one, we can't, the cost to get rid of it, so the current policy currently is if, if someone has anything that we do not take at our facility, now, as you all may or may not know, we take all electronic recycling, TVs, computers, anything that have like a brain kind of thing in it that's electronically used, we take mattresses for free, and we still pick them up on the side of the road, which someone can put it in a truck and throw it on East Road, they can't get to
At least throw it in your driveway.
Yeah, or whatever. I mean, you, you know, just bring it another mile, whatever. And we do take Freon appliances, we take refrigerators, freezers, um, air conditioners, dehumidifiers, anything that has Freon in it, we do not take stoves. So trying to say, and I've been working on this for a while, kind of bantering with myself with it. And I went on on my list serve, the public works list serve in here in the state, and asked, you know, what are you all doing for that? So people had transfer stations, people, you can, you can bring it for so much of an item, whatever. So I basically took probably oh, I bet I had twenty-five towns or something that responded. I went through it all, I came up with this list of items and kind of tried to figure out a a dollar amount that wouldn't kill the resident, but would help us, we, once we collect this, we have to pay to get rid of it. So I'm trying to make sure that we don't get stuck, you know, holding the bag on it. So I would allow people, I would have a separate dumpster at our facility that would allow people to bring whatever here. Um. Pay this amount. And we would take it, and then when our dumpster got full, we would take the dumpster, we have a dumpster truck, we would, we would get another dumpster for our dumpster truck, and we would bring it to, to USA, and we would go on the scale, and we'd pay for it. And I'm proposing a pickup fee of fifty dollars, if, if they want two guys to go out and pick something up with one of our trucks, I'm proposing a fee of fifty dollars, now currently USA will pick up up to three items at a time, fifty dollars apiece. You know, if you had a fridge, a sofa, and a chair, or whatever, it's fifty dollars an item, and they'll take up to three at any given time. So I'm thinking this would, this would be a program that would kind of help the residents get rid of items they want to get rid of. Our hazardous waste, household hazardous waste collection drop-off was, it took them an extra two days at my facility to document and tag everything to go to the, that's how much came in, so the people, I mean, during COVID, people have been cleaning house, because they're there. So this would give people, like I say, we get calls every week. You know, where's the transfer station, we don't have, what do I do with this? Well, we have, we do provide bulk drop-offs twice a year, which up until this year were, were no charge. Starting this year, we're gonna have to start paying, you know, by the ton for whatever's dropped off. We, we, we had a good run on that for free, it ended. So we, we had a hell of a run on that for free, I mean, we're talking fifteen years or something. So this will give the, you know, so basically we're telling residents now, we don't have a transfer station, you, you can put it in a truck and bring it over to USA yourself. I, I believe they charge, I don't know if it's a minimum of a ton or not, it may cost a minimum of like fifty to eighty dollars to get rid of whatever. Um. Or you can hang on to it until the bulk drop-off. For the residents, the bulk drop-off will still be free. We will now have to start to pay for the disposal of it. So this, this seems like to me a program that could work. Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, is you think I'm too cheap, too expensive? Any thoughts on what we're, you know, or if even think it's a good idea, I mean, I'm not gonna do it if the board says we don't want to do it.
I have, I have a question to start, and we didn't have a chance to chat about this, but, so when we're doing the, the fee for the, you know, the fee schedule that you're putting in front of us here, we're gonna aggregate it in a disposable container, or disposal container at DW, and then when we get rid of that container, we're still paying the same tipping fee?
Yeah, well, we'll be paying a, a bulk fee, eighty dollars a ton, or whatever it is, for the entire can, whatever's in there, that's why I'm hoping that this, this will offset the, now the metal we take to, to the scrapyard, so anything that comes in that's metal, that's a plus. Well, anything that comes in that's not, it's gonna cost us.
And, and I think I know the answer to this, but you wouldn't be able to forecast what we're talking about in terms of revenue?
I, I couldn't, I, I don't know what people, you know, after a year, I'll be able to take a shot at it, but
Okay.
I think it's gonna be popular, what we say that.
Rates fluctuate so much too. You could have a really good year, you've got a lot of copper and copper was up.
Right.
You're talking about the scrap, the typical fees don't come down.
No, 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 but revenue wise, he's gonna have a tough time ever predicting revenue.
And we have to be careful, we have to make sure that whatever, you know, whatever we're using for a dumpster is either gotta be undercover, or we have to cover it. Because a couch in the rain is gonna be very heavy. So we don't want it getting wet.
Right, right.
So the dumpster will not be accessible to anybody that just comes and drops off, because they need to pay, correct? So the process would be coming in.
They'll have to come to the office.
Okay.
And they'll have to pay. Um. We don't do credit cards at the office, so it would either be, well, my administrative assistant, as you know, people write bad checks, what do you keep, you gotta be a little trusting. Let's, let's see how it works and see how many bad checks we get. You know, because if somebody wants to write a personal check, I mean, I write a personal check for taxes, if it's so, in any event, it would, it would either be cash, currently it would be cash or check. Well. They'd have to stop at the office, and then we would direct them where to go, and someone would help put it into the receptacle.
Now, if, if I were to, you know, I've got a spare fridge in the basement, I want to get rid of it, it doesn't work anymore. I'm gonna put it out by the curb, call public works, you guys are gonna come and pick it up. Am I gonna pay the fifty dollar pickup fee?
Yes.
And the, uh, the appliance fee?
No, so we won't, we won't charge you for the appliance, because we're gonna get rid of the appliance, that appliance for free.
Appliance isn't on this list.
Yeah.
Well, okay, the couch, you know, whatever the example is.
Well, the couch, yes, the couch you're gonna pay for the fifteen plus the fifty.
It's fifteen plus fifty, it's not fifty flat.
Right, and that's where I didn't know if, if the board of selectmen, you know, the fifty dollars, I'm sending out two guys with a truck. Um. So it's whether or not they pick up, you know, if they go to this person's house, it's fifty, whether they pick up a sofa, or a sofa, three chairs, whatever.
Yeah, I was, one thing I was gonna suggest is a, a maximum number of items, so it's not like we're moving, we cleaned out the house, we called for a pickup.
Right.
And you have to show up with a dumpster.
Well, we'll just, you know, if it's too much, then we'll have to go out twice, that's trips, so that's a hundred.
I would, you know, like maybe five items, it's fifty bucks or something, you know.
Yeah, we could, see, that's why we're, that's why I'm here, I mean, yeah, we could come up with some logical
Because I think realistically, somebody's not gonna pay, you know, like, you know, thirty bucks for, you know, fifteen for a sofa, ten for a chair, you know, like, at some point, they're gonna be like, I should just drive this over there myself, you know, or get somebody to do it, because
You know, and a lot of people, I, I believe a lot of people will, will bring it to the, to the facility, to, to save the money, and you know, we get the calls, you know, where can I bring this, and it's like, well, you can bring it to USA, or hang on to it, and bring it up to Show and Row, you know, in the spring, or whatever, so I think a lot of people have access to either a trailer, or a truck, or a friend with same. Um, they, they just have no place to bring it, so we end up picking it up anyhow, out on East Road, or whatever.
Especially toilets, can't get rid of the toilet.
I'm just, I can't.
There's a lawsuit going, I had to stop it. You see them everywhere.
I can after the meeting, I can tell you how to get rid of the toilet.
Any other comments from?
Actually, I can tell you right now, we'll come get it for sixty dollars.
Why, why are my concerns?
I'll tell you when I don't.
People can be, I'm afraid you're gonna wind up going to work one morning, there's gonna be all kinds of this stuff in front of the gate, because nobody was there to accept their money, so they'll just leave it, and they've got to dispose of it, and you got one on the town.
Well.
That's my concern.
I I, I almost think if if that were the case, people would be dropping it there now, I mean, even though we don't I, we do have, we do have camera, we do have a camera that shoots out to the gate. Uh, we may have to get a better camera to shoot out there if we end up having a problem, because we can, we can see, I've not tried to zoom in like on a license plate yet, that far out, but I, I understand.
I think somebody that would do that kind of thing would probably be dumping it on East Row anyway.
It was pretty east row, which is, it's at least more convenient to be dropping it right in front of where our guys are, they must have to go up for it.
Well, we've come to work in the morning and phone you know, five gallon pills of chemicals and things, people, I mean, people do it. I guess, thank you for bringing it at least that far, not that we can get rid of it, we have to wait, hold for the hazardous waste day.
You know, I, the concept, I like the concept, I think it's a good idea, I appreciate you bringing it forward. You guys have comments on the concept in general, or on the, the rates that he's outlined, and bear in mind, we have about ninety seconds before we need to break, I think they're there.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea, and you did the research with other towns to see, kind of get the fee structure, I mean, I take your word for it, it's
I just it's gonna be a union issue with the labor. And had a responsibility for the guys, and furniture. You know, if you don't have the weight equipment for them, they handle the house, and all that stuff, and somebody gets hurt.
Well, we did, I mean, depending on what's out there, I mean, we, we, what would a backhoe or something, if we have to lift it up and put it in the container, I mean, we we will likely go out and put it in the back of one of our trucks, bring it back and put it in, in, in whatever container is gonna go and back at our facility. I don't envision us driving around with our, with our dumpster container on the truck and doing that, we're gonna the dumpster will be at the facility, we have several of them, now, we're probably gonna have to get another one or two, but and then load it onto the truck and bring it for disposal, so we'll be putting on the back of one of our
I'm just thinking, the last time I had something delivered to my house, um, the guys actually had weighted bolts around the waist and straps they have to put on to move, and it was all required because of all safety reasons, all the regulations and stuff. I just would be concerned if somebody gets on one end of a sofa, like me and my husband, one end and the other, but they're town employees, and they lift without the proper that we could be held accountable, or if any damage is done to property and that kind of stuff. Those would be my concerns.
I mean, we do have, I mean, we can, if we're gonna start doing this, especially with, you know, refrigerators and stuff, we're gonna have to get some of those lift straps, you know.
So we need to recess here and take up the call and tell me, which also involves so could I have a motion to recess, please?
So move.
Say so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in recess at seven thirty, and I'm gonna call the town meetings order. Amy Lam, are you with us? Amy Lam, are you with us? So, hey, now.
Oh, can you?
So, do you have a copy of the notice, or do you need me to read it?
Uh, no, I have a copy of the notice.
Would you please?
Yep. Um. Did you already call it to order?
Yes, seven thirty.
Okay. Warning, notice of special town meeting, East Windsor, Connecticut. The legal voters of the town of East Windsor are hereby warned that a town meeting will be held at the town hall, eleven Rice Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, and via Zoom on Thursday, April seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at seven thirty PM for the following. Item one, to consider and discuss an additional appropriation in the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from the town's unassigned general fund balance for repair of the Broadbrook pool retaining wall, dated at East Windsor, Connecticut, this first day of April, two thousand twenty-two. East Windsor Board of Selectmen, Jason E. Bowser, first selectman, Marie De Souza, deputy selectman, Sarah Muska, selectman, Alan Baker, selectman, and Charlie Norrell, selectman.
Thank you, ma'am, I'm now gonna ask for a motion to elect a moderator for the town meeting, is there a motion?
Sarah Muska, twenty-five Maple Avenue, I nominate Jason Bowser as moderator.
Is there a second? A second, motion has been made in second, are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations?
Who, who seconded? I'm sorry.
Paul Anderson.
Paul Anderson, okay.
Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close. Move we close nominations, Paul Anderson.
Is there a second?
Second, we're
Motion made by Paul Anderson, seconded by Marie De Souza to close nominations, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor of Jason Bowser as moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I'm gonna Opposed? Okay, now I'm gonna read the eligibility to vote. Um, at any town meeting other than a regular or special town election, or any meeting of any fire, sewer, or school district, or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated. By any special act. Any person who is an elector of such town may vote, and any citizen of the United States. Who's over eighteen years or more jointly or separately is liable to the town, district, or subdivision for taxes. Assess against him on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grant list of such town, district, or subdivision. Or who would be so liable, if not entitled, to an exemption under Medicaid General Statutes. Subdivision seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, or twenty-six. Of section twelve dash eighty-one may vote unless restricted by the provisions of any special act relating to such town, district, or subdivision. Those are the folks who are eligible to vote tonight. Um, okay. Who has resolution number one, Selectman Baker?
I do, Alan Baker. Three forty Rice Street. To consider and discuss an additional appropriation of the sum of five hundred thousand dollars. From the town's unassigned general fund balance for repair of Broadbrook Pond retaining wall, and move the foregoing resolution be adopted.
Is there a second?
Charlie Norrell, seven Grand Terrace, will second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Lynn, you wanna give us a thirty second overview of, of this, just for the record, for record sake, I know everybody here knows about it.
For, for, for the record sake, um. The top blocks, the cap blocks, if you will, on the retaining wall along Depot Street and the Broadbrook Pond. I guess it's. Three weeks ago now, on a Monday morning, we realized that. Uh, maybe a fifty or so foot section of them, for whatever reason, toppled over, ended up at the pond, took the chain fence with it. Um, so we went out, took a look at it. Got on the phone right away, hired a contractor to. Come out. And uh, take a look at it, we blocked, immediately blocked off the sidewalk. Um. With some concrete blocks, barricades, caution tape, what have you. But knowing that it's a very heavily traversed sidewalk. Um, heading down to the center of town, you know, from Mill Pond Village and those, uh, you know, east. Um, we decided we needed to hop on it really quick, we had a, a preferred contractor that actually. Did the reconstruction of the Broadbrook Pond Dam. And did my emergency repair down on South Water Street of the pipe lining. I gave them a call. I don't know, I should have bought a lottery ticket that day because they were in between projects. And if I hadn't called, like, within that week. They wouldn't be able to touch it until it was middle of summer. So, we got lucky. I had them give me an estimate. We uh. Moved the board of selectmen, board of finance. Um, had them coming out and they're, they're doing a great job, we, we. We did some value engineering, if you will. There were two different options for the possibility, what we would do. I, I opted to go for what I thought was the best. Which was actually the least expensive, um. However, we're now. As we, we're gonna repair the sidewalk. We replace the sidewalk from where the repair is. To uh, Main Street and put a new. Ramp, new sidewalk, ramp, so basically, we're gonna have a new sidewalk. From Main Street and Broadbrook. Up to just on the other side of the entrance to the little park, where they launch boats and what have you, because we had a home there, it was a. Causing problems. When we uncovered the area between, say, the, if you know where the dry hydrant is, at the pond on Depot Street, Main Street. The top caps, they were not in good shape. So. I had to make another decision at that point. To extend that project. Down. Pretty much the main street. Again, the fact that we did the value engineering. Uh, we have a preferred vendor on a state contract to do the new guard rail we're gonna put in. As well as a new fence we have to put in. Uh, we saved enough money there, so that the difference in cost to extend the, it's basically a. A monolithic pore of a little bit of a wall with a sidewalk. Um. We're still gonna come in under, or not to exceed. And quite frankly, I'm hoping to come in. It would deal under or not to exceed, but I need to have that dollar amount, because we're not done yet. It, it's what happens, it's like when you go into rural house. Where you, you just find things that, that aren't there, and as soon as we rip that, it's, it's a good thing we decided to replace the sidewalk. Or. We might likely, it was hit, you know, over the whole. Wall, so. But. It's coming along very well, we got probably another couple of weeks out there now, we had to extend the. The scope of the, the project, but I think you're all gonna like it. Uh, the. The fence and the, and the uh, new guide rail might take a while to go in, we're gonna put a nice. Um. Wood post. Square wood post and wood guard rail. Down, down along Depot Street, it's gonna look real nice, people, for people walking up and down Depot Street. We got the, the Opera House there now, that has functions. Below, so we're gonna have a nice new sidewalk, nice new fence, we dropped the fence down to forty-two inches, which. Is allowed, so that people can fish over it, once you get past the fire hydrant. The dry hydrant, so I, I think it's gonna be, well, I know it's gonna be really nice when, once it's done. So.
To Lenny's credit, uh, the day the, the issue presented itself, he was in my office with a solution in hand by eleven o'clock in the morning. Um, so they, they moved with all deliberate speed to come up with a, a good solution to, to address a public safety concern. Um, any questions or comments on the resolution? Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Uh, I would say this is an excellent investment, with the money we have to do something positive with the stuff.
Yep, I agree, thank you, sir. Other comments? Yes, sir.
Things court, I'm curious, did you mention what caused all this? Could go into the fine?
Age. It was age, it was just.
Things letting go or what?
It, the, the uh, the top blocks or the capstones, if you will, that were on top of. Of the retaining wall were hanging over about half their width. So, you know, the wall was here, these blocks over, hung over that much. And when we did the work on the dam, we saw that there was a little erosion starting to take place. So, we were putting that on the list to take care of this and. We hadn't quite figured out what we were gonna do yet, but. We knew we were gonna have to address it very soon. Unfortunately, I don't know why it chose that day to, I mean, I don't know if it was my wins or any, I don't know why it just. Decided to roll in.
Quite a few times before, I didn't notice anything that was, you know, obvious.
Yeah, it, it wasn't terribly obvious, I mean, you, you'd have to look underneath it. They were just kind of. Getting older, it's. They weren't really mortared that well in place, but you know. Back in the day, I don't know how old that is, but it's gotta be. It's gotta be.
Eighteen forty. That one, the mill, I think we built the mill. Captured the pond to get water, cooperate the mill. Way along, and that's that wonderful redstone.
Yes, it's exactly.
I know, that's my foundation.
We were actually able to, to recapture a fair amount of the redstone. That's good. Other questions or comments?
I would just comment that I was, my fear when. I found out about it is that we, you know, rightly hurry up and do it, but it would look, you know, utilitarian and like. Highway overpass, but it sounds like it's gonna, it's gonna be nice and it's gonna be functional, so I'm happy to hear that.
Thank you, young one. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? So carry. No, no further business to come before the town meeting, I'd ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Second. Motion was made by Paul Anderson, seconded by Alan Baker, it's non debatable, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Town meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two PM. If it's like in a second, we'll call the selectmen's meeting back. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you for everybody for saying their names, I'm getting used to everybody's faces, but um, since I'm not there, I'm not good at the voices yet, so hopefully. That'll come, have a good night.
You too. Okay, so we'll reconvene, we're on agenda item nine F, uh, which is still the discussion around the bulk fee schedule. Uh, is there any, any other questions or comments for Lynn?
Just, just, I wanna clarify something, you know. Marie had some good questions and. As I was sitting there thinking of it, you know, we do have a, um, a couple of trailers that we go around, pick some up with. We do have uh, appliance hand carts, because we're, we're the. Seem to be the. Dispatch movers of the town for furniture and what have you, um, so we have the proper equipment, if we need. Feel the need to get some of those, I know you're applying straps, mover straps, whatever, so I, a lot of the bigger items that we. Walked up a ramp onto one of our trailers anyhow, you know, we're not gonna try and kill ourselves trying to get it in the back of a truck, so we'll, we'll, we'll make sure we. Don't end up with workers' comp claims or hurt people.
Other questions or comments? Then I'd ask for motion to improve the bulk fee schedule as presented. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded, any discussion, sir?
So are we going to? This is exactly what it's gonna look like, or are we gonna modify it for how many items for pickup and?
Oh, that's a good point, we, we had talked about that, um, what did you say, five? Is everybody coming?
You think five, five, that's fine.
That's.
So, uh, the, then it would be amended motion to accept the fee schedule, um, as amended to include a maximum of five per pickup. Uh, who was the maker?
Hold on, then my motion is such.
Try, and I'll second that event. Uh, any further discussion? Thank you for catching that, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? But if you find that you are having any problems with this, as it gets in effect, just let us know, we'll revisit. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great idea.
Have a great.
Okay, um, so you guys have, uh, by now seen, and I think some of you have received the um. Uh, survey that, that we put together around the use of ARPA funds. Um. The, so we did the Erase Grants, uh, last year under the interim final. Under the interim final rule, there were five allowable uses for that funding. It was, and I'm gonna try to remember them all now, but it was sewer water and broadband, um. Oh, I'm blanking, culture and tourism, hazard pay for municipal employees, revenue recapture and. Oh, small business is not progress system. Um, so you forget, I know, one we do, uh, so, um, that was under the interim final rule. Since that, that plan, or since that project came to a close, um, the final rule has been issued, and thankfully, as part of the final rule. Um, they basically forgave any potential, uh, well-intentioned, uh, misapplications of that interim final rule. So that should mean that we have no problems at all going forward. Uh, but one of the things that they also included in the final rule was, uh, an allowance for. Up to ten million dollars can be basically applied to anything you deem appropriate, with two exceptions. You cannot use it for tax relief. You cannot use it to pay down pension debt. Um, I understand, and I was talking to Alan earlier, I understand the, uh, you can't use it for tax relief, because that creates a, a fiscal cliff. Wants the money, I get that, but I don't understand the pension debt on that. Nonetheless, those are the two prohibitions that are, that remain in the final. In order for us to use, um, the, the money that we have left, which is two point three 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 million dollars. Um, we need to pass a, an irrevocable resolution by the end of April. Uh, and so what we're going to do, uh, what I'm gonna ask you to do is accept the, the resolution that I drafted and put it in the packet. Uh, and or reject to a town meeting, which also will happen on the twenty-first. Um, so that way, uh, we can make sure that we are in compliance with the final rule. And we allow the remaining funds available to the town of East Windsor to be used for, um, a pri- a purpose. Purposes to be determined based on guidance from the, uh, community survey. The same deadlines apply, the funding needs to be committed by, by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and expended by December tw- December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, um, then I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion to accept that and forward it to a town meeting. So whereas in March of twenty twenty, the United States Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas the town of East Windsor was the recipient of approximately three point four five three million in federal relief funds. And whereas the town of East Windsor has two point three 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 million federal relief funds unexpended. And whereas the ARPA final rule allows local governments to make an irrevocable decision to take a standard allowance of up to ten million dollars. And whereas any standard allowance needs to be formally selected by the recipient of local government by, uh, no later than April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Now therefore being resolved, town of East Windsor selects to take the standard deduction in the full amount of unexpended ARPA. Funds allotted to the town not to exceed two point three 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 million dollars. And the first selectman and the director of finance slash town treasurer are hereby authorized to take any necessary steps or actions to file any documentation. Associated with irrevocable decision of the United States Department of Treasury. Approved by the Board of Selectmen on April seventh, twenty twenty-two, uh, and forward to a town meeting to be held later this month. Your second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Just while we're on the, the topic, I'll share that, um, the Erase Grant has been picked up in some fashion by not less than seven communities so far. Um, a lot of them in Eastern Connecticut. Waterford, Old Line, East Line, Summers. Uh, Greenwich is doing a version of it, um, so it's been really kind of a trend center. I just need that's cool, I'm, not that I'm keeping score, but I actually am keeping score. Um, okay, Ruth, are you with us? Alright, so we're on to the, uh, discussion and approval of bids for the development of the eight thirty J Affordable Housing Plan. I have here a copy of a memo, um, from Ruth for you guys.
I am here.
How are you?
I'm good, my dogs are really hungry, but I'm good. Um.
So, we did. I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, I was just gonna reference the memo that was sent out today.
As you can see from the memo, um, we had two responses to the bids that were put out. Um, they both came in with a bid, uh, at the same dollar amount. Um, and based on, on Ruth's assessment of the two bids, uh. One company more meets our needs and timeframe than, um. Than the other, uh, and it happens that we have an existing relationship with that bidder. Um, so Ruth, you wanna do, you wanna add any color to the memo, or, or are you, uh, are you good?
Um, I think I'm good, I just think that, um. Of the two firms, I mean, both were very similar, uh, proposals. One of them is, uh, just a broader service entity and, um. Doesn't have a heavy amount of Connecticut-based experience. And the other one, um. You know, the qualifications as far as technical staff, I think are more. Connecticut-centric and. Specifically working with municipalities in this vein and it's. Having, um, Taikey, um. Know our town, I think we'll have a. A very well-tailored plan.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll start with a question, uh, just for the record, um, I, I know what the answer is, but I'm gonna ask it just to, to be on point. Um, by awarding Taikey the, um, the bid. Um, they would be completing that work not on existing town time, right? So there wouldn't be double dipping?
Correct. Yep. And the other thing to note is, um, I think the money has to be spent. By June, and so it, the three-month schedule that they put forward works. With that.
Free.
And now I have two questions, um, is this state mandated that we have a plan in place?
It is, yes.
It is.
And that's in eight thirty J.
It's in eight thirty J, and have we had one in the past? It's in E thirty G, and have we had one in the past? No, no, right? I just I'm curious, um, because uh East Windsor Housing Authority is a separate entity, this quasi um organization, um. I just wondering how this will affect them and anything that they're doing over there moving forward.
My understanding is that it should not. It's a a reporting plan for how to increase affordable housing opportunities. Uh, it dovetails, it's in some uh section of the statutes. But it dovetails into E thirty G requirements, uh, which requires ten percent of housing stock in municipalities throughout Connecticut to in each municipality throughout Connecticut. To be deemed affordable. Affordable is a a definition that changes based on the average household. Income or value uh in each town. So uh affordable housing in Greenwich or Trumbull is not the same thing as affordable housing in Popper. It's gotta be seventy five percent of the the average value. Um, so this is a reporting thing that we need to do, although our E thirty G requirement. The statutory reference is ten percent. We are at fourteen percent. So uh while we need to have a plan, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna be increasing that affordable housing stock.
See, that was the question I was gonna ask. I thought we were at seventeen percent, but maybe that was some time ago and now it's different.
Fourteen is the last number I saw in D O A. We were doing the restriction.
So we're above what we need to be. So what would be the? The point besides statutorily it needs to be done?
That's the one.
Got it.
Our issue, yes, off road is no longer falls on your.
Will no longer.
Will no, yeah, will no longer.
Well, no, that's not true. It's still affordable. Yeah, it's just that.
So I would just add that our plan would focus more on how to make housing more attainable. You know, it's just a understanding the housing market and developing a plan. Um, is worthwhile enough itself.
And it does give us some uh more complete stats out of the community.
And it will be some guidance in the P O C D.
Which is, we're we're six years into it. Um, because they gotta be winding up next two years. We got things to do, though. Yeah, that's one of the things we're gonna get to over the summer is actually trying to check some of that stuff off. Um, Ruth and I, this is an aside from the agenda. I and Ruth and I had a conversation, I think it was last Thursday. Around uh C D certification is uh a high economic development strategy. And and actually, believe it or not, those two things dovetail together, the P O C D and the development strategy. We were looking at the C D certification criteria. And without having applied, we're doing like sixty or seventy percent of what the requirements are already. And there's low hanging fruit there. So one of the things that we'll tackle over the summer between our board. And P Z C and then some of some of the other ones proposed to predominantly is the um P O C D implementation. Other questions or comments on this? Do you have a a recommendation from professional staff to accept the bid from Tyke? Um, can I have a motion?
Uh, make a motion that uh we authorize the first selectman to enter into agreement with planning and policy group. Uh, for the purpose of putting together the a two thousand twenty two Affordable Housing Plan.
There a second? Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, Ruth.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, Ruth, do you know how reg- how regularly that plan needs to be populated? There is a remote bridge once in a while. Uh, yeah, it's something like that. It's not every year, but it's.
I I don't know. I can get that info for you, though.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, tax refunds.
Move we approve the tax refunds totaling one thousand two hundred seventy eight dollars and ninety cents.
There a second? Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Selectmen's reports, okay. So the town of East Windsor is looking for community feedback. We're having spend about two point four million dollars for our ARPA allocation. To that end, we've sent out surveys to every residence in town. We are looking for general guidance as to the areas of highest interest in the community, and the advisory results will help guide the town. As we make final plans for this once in a lifetime infusion of federal funds into our community. Surveys can be returned in hard copy to my office by April twenty eighth or can be completed online by clicking on the link on the town's website or on the several Facebook posts that that have been circulated. And we would encourage selectmen to circulate that as well. Um, I also want to thank the staff in my office, the assessors office and the town clerk's office for their help in putting together a nine thousand piece mailing. Um, in just uh three days while doing their other responsibilities as well. It was. Uh, heartening for me to see the the team lift that went into that and was unsolicited and it was appreciated. Um, last week, we learned that the State Bond Commission has approved more than eight hundred thousand dollars in funds for the town of East Windsor to be used for the installation of lights at Abbey Road. Field expansion and irrigation work at East Windsor Park and other local park improvements. A very big thank you to Senators Sahu and representatives Jamie Foster and Carol Hall. For their bipartisan support of these funds. The projects will add to the quality of life in our community and we are grateful for it. Last night, the Board of Finance finalized the budget proposal that will now advance to the voters for their consideration of the referendum to be held on May tenth. Supported by strong grand list growth of four point two percent, which is ten percent higher than any town in the region that didn't undergo a rebound this year. Um, the budget represents a mill rate increase of zero point zero seven mils. The average homeowner in East Windsor would see an increase of eleven dollars for the year on their home. Um, the town is working on an updated light and property code ordinance, thanks to Planning Director Ruth Ann Calabrese and her team. For spearheading the drafting of the ordinance. It's been workshops by town staff. And shortly will be presented to the Board of Selectmen for their review to incorporate any points that this board deems appropriate. After that, the ordinance will be scheduled for a town meeting for the townspeople to consider. On Monday, we hosted Scott Sores, the Executive Director of USDA Rural Development for Southern New England. Mister Sores joined uh town staff for a visit to local municipal facilities to determine if or where. There may be opportunities for federal funding to be used for facility improvements and upgrades. Um, we appreciate the time that Mister Sores spent and the visit uh that that he granted us, and we look forward to future collaborations that may be appropriate. We are continuing to work with residents of the School Hill Neighborhood Association to help them navigate the arduous process of securing state funding. For the extension of Connecticut water to their neighborhood. It's been a long and frustrating process, but we're doing all that we can to help them with that project. Thanks to Senator Anwar, Representative Foster, the Department of Public Health and the Connecticut Water Company, and especially the leadership of the School Hill Association. For their partnership throughout the process. This Saturday, the town of East Windsor and East Windsor Rotary Club will host a breakfast with the Easter Bunny at the Broadbrook Fire Department. The event is from eight thirty to eleven thirty and prices six dollars per adult and three dollars per child. With proceeds going to benefit summer camp scholarships in East Windsor Park. You have to hand it to our team in community services. Uh, they can always find a way to have a good time. This past Friday, they celebrated National Waffle Day at the Senior Center. Staff from Parks and Recreation and the Senior Center served a packed house of East Windsor seniors' waffles with fun toppings to celebrate the day. Uh, it was a really fun event and I brought my three year old son uh to make an appearance of his own, and I want to thank uh Melissa Maltesse for making him. His very own super fun custom made giraffe giraffe shaped waffle. Um, and lastly, next Saturday the sixteenth, the Agricultural Commission is sponsoring its annual horse team plowing event. At the Community Garden. The event is at one P M. And if you have not seen us in that event before, you really should check it out. It is cool to see, great for branches. Um, and it is uh it is an impressive site. That's what I have. Great.
Yeah, I have attended only one meeting on this month on to report on, but I chose to report on it at our next meeting because I wanted to do justice. And give them the courtesy and respect that they're. Want to put you full authority guys. My computer is acting up, so I wasn't making it take that out. Um, it's starting. I don't know where what. I will report that in the evening.
Charlie. Um, the March of the Mix and Skate Park meeting was canceled for the month of March, so I didn't do attend that. Um, on March twenty third, the Board of Finance held a public hearing in which the first selectmen and board of education gave their budget presentations. Jason already talked about a lot of the finding stuff already, so skip down here. On April fourth, the Rose Point Fire Commission held a meeting. Of the budget proposal to be sent to a public hearing and vote to the taxpayers was established. Um, the public hearing will be held on April eighteenth with a budget budget vote scheduled for May second. The district is presenting a one point nine five mill rate budget to the taxpayers, which is a point zero five increase over the last. Um. And lastly, the only thing that hasn't been talked about is tomorrow, um, these were the P T O is celebrating bus buyer appreciation day in town. Um, signs have been set out across town to thank bus drivers for all their efforts during the years of the pandemic. Um, they've really done a great job and really had to step up and and deal with a lot of differences that they don't normally have to deal with. Um, the P T O, um, as always, collected donations of particular items to make uh gray bags to give to each bus driver and be passing those out to them tomorrow.
And that's it for the.
Thank you, sir. Selectmen Baker?
I have a very short report because I was required to be out of state uh quite a bit in the last month. Um, but I did uh go to a couple of the budget workshops that the Board of Finance had, uh, and then last night, the Wetlands Commission met and had a. Um, just two items, pretty simple. They approved uh an application that is now gonna go through planning and zoning for a a new. Uh, business on Route five and um, you know, and that is a bright determination for a farmer over in Melrose. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Um, a lot of uh what I have has already been touched upon. Um, but there is a Warehouse Point Fire Department auxiliary pancake breakfast with the Easter Bunny on Sunday. Um, April tenth from eight A M to ten thirty at um Station One on eighty nine Bridge Street. And I believe they are doing their plant sale next Saturday and Sunday as filed the sixteenth and seventeenth. Um, the. Okay, thank you. Um, the Economic Development Commission's meeting on April fifth was canceled due to um lack of a forum. The E D C as well as many other boards and commissions have vacancies that are looking to be filled. If you are looking to serve and give back to your community, please fill out an application which can be found on the town's website. And return to the First Selectment Office. Uh, the Economic Development Commission will be hosting a town of East Windsor Business and Government meet and greet on Thursday, April twenty eighth. From five thirty to seven, it'll be held here in this meeting room. This is a great opportunity for business owners in town to network and meet community officials. The event is free to attend and is open to all East Windsor businesses and those that have an interest in East Windsor's economy. Refreshments will be provided and remarks will be given by First Selectman Jason Bowza and Senator Sahu Donmar, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Real on the public participation, uh, this is the public second opportunity to address the board. Uh, is there anybody who would like to address the board's? Okay, um, we will have a a brief executive session. Um, if uh I could have a motion, it would just include the five members and there will be no action afterwards. Uh, could I have a motion?
I'll move the the Board of Selectmen going to the executive session at eight or six.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are in executive session at eight oh six P M. Think I'll get this up as soon as I can, um, but there won't be any more votes tonight. All you'll need is you adjourn the.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
No.
Morning free day and it's not gonna rain.
We are out of executive session at eight forty six. Uh, with no further business to come before the Board of Selectmen, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I'll second it. Motion made by Marie, seconded by Charlie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at eight forty seven P M. Thank you all and have a good night.